Okay. Council work session, please join me in the pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the Council Wednesday, October 18th Council meeting, open for visitor comment.
Steve Topaz again, I have three questions. There's been, and basically these come out of what's happened recently in the area. There's been some good press about how the Scappus Industrial Park education program is really going with people, businesses showing up wanting to be part of it. The question I have is have we set up a liaison committee between the City Council St. Helens and the Scappus operation so we can be part of that?
Actually, we're working on a joint meeting.
But we don't have a committee yet.
For steps, we're working on it.
The City Council, and this is through Susan Khan, indicated they didn't want any educational buildings on the waterfront. This was at one of the Meriwether presentation sessions.
You never said that, Steve.
Yes, you did. In fact, you took down my rather large display of education system.
Yes, I did, and then you physically pushed me out of way.
No, I did not. In fact, my dear, I've been contacted by a number of people telling me how upset they were that you touched that particular thing.
And then I asked you to make it clear to people that it was not part of our presentation because that evening was part, that evening was our presentation rather than yours.
I know, we were supposed to have public comments, and that was my comment, and you, the question is, is the City Council against having an education facility on the waterfront? And I assume there was only Susan Khan's discussion about that. The next thing is this weekend, or last couple of weekends, we've had a Halloween operation here, and part of the operation has been parking, which we put a lot of cars in. And one of the things that is necessary for almost any large entertainment venue is parking, which in fact, we do have. Has the city considered putting in pads for food carts, whether it would have water, sewer, power, also put in restrooms? And turning the Knob Hill ground, if you take a look at the park here, it's a large amphitheater, into a entertainment venue and rent the parking and the venue out is a moneymaker. Because as I say, when you looked at the number of people we put in the parking area, it's a valuable piece of ground just for parking.
Are you talking about Knob Hill Nature Park?
Yep.
So you want to make a parking lot out of it?
No, we've got the parking lot, that's the waterfront. If you take a look, it's basically a big bowl, mow down all the trees, put like a stage, and have a large entertainment venue there. Because as I say, the biggest problem with a lot of these entertainment music centers is parking, and I think you've demonstrated you have an excellent parking system.
I spoiled your dream because about six, seven years ago, that property was surplus property for the city. And being on the overseeing the Parks Commission and kind of suggested that we make a nature park out of it because we needed an ordinance by the city and by the police to police it. And they don't, there's no ordinances for surplus property, and there is for parks. It clears out at 10 o'clock, and it did, it was very effective in that sense. So that's the history of how it became a nature park from surplus property.
Before that, it was the equipment area for the quarry there.
And, and it was a place for kids to escape to and enjoy the evenings in the summertime and camp out and that kind of thing. So, I mean, I was part of that, and you know that there are people who are friends of Knob Hill Nature Park and are kind of custodians of that at this, at this point. Boy, it'd be hard pulling that park away and making it, make it into a parking lot or a bowl or whatever.
For two weeks, or two nights a weekend, I put 15,000 people in there and something like 8,000 parked cars, just knocked dollars.
Steve, you know, one of the things we just got finished talking about was the effectiveness of the trolley from Holton area and through our town, bringing people down to Old Town area or to the riverfront district or the historic district, whatever you want to call it. And how effective and efficient that was with that little, with that trolley system, with that trolley system working. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a trolley going most every weekend and especially when there are events to alleviate the parking?
As I say.
Rather than having big parking lots that sit dormant and have, you know, that's, that's one of the talks we have, and I'd really like to engage with you one to one sometime and talk about that.
One of the things that can be done for parking lots, there are hardy grasses. You can turn that into a large grass field for most of the week, and then it becomes a waterfront park as compared to asphalt or gravel. Right now, it's semi-gravel, whatever, park. So change the surface to a green growing surface, but still just as a parking. And again, how many cars do we have parked in there, 10,000 to 12,000?
You know, I'm not completely sure, Steve, but I just want to answer your three questions.
Okay.
Okay. The Scappus Industrial Park, it's called the Boeing Effect.
Right.
Anybody that is around that will tell you that what I'm telling you is exactly true. When Boeing signs on, they have a lot of different schools and other companies that follow. It's called the Boeing Effect, okay? So you can look into OMEC a little further. Education facility, we have actually talked about something possibly going in marine-wise down here for education that would tie in with the OMEC Boeing effect. I brought Roy McGregor, who used to do the concerts out there, and he said outside venues are very, very, very difficult because we do have that property right now.
Right.
And it's just sitting idle. He said, you've already got the fencing, that's a bonus. But you're taking a risk, and if the city wants to take a risk, he said, you can lose, you can lose your butt or you can save the day. He goes, the only way to do that is maybe a three-day concert. Now, trying to get citizens to back a three-day concert might pose to be a little tough.
Can I enlarge your comment about the citizens?
Yes.
One of the things that I noticed in this Halloween business, the town, as far as a large group of citizens, did not participate to help the town. We have lots of people here, and a lot of towns, when they have a big party or some affair, everybody in town is part of it to help. I did not see that of St. Helens. We had a good operation, but it did not involve everybody, everybody up and down the street being part of it.
It wasn't from, it wasn't from our end of.
I know, I know. But the comment that came from you, we would have to talk a lot of people into it. We have to talk a lot of people into helping our city. It's the same problem that you just described, if we put an entertainment venue in or something like that. And I think that business of engaging all or a huge percentage of the citizens of St. Helens is one of our major problems in making this city go forward on anything.
Yes, I don't agree with you on that.
So that's something I think that we should really, we almost want to have every other Thursday, shake hands with somebody you don't know, because that's one of the problems. The success from as many outside peoples we have here for Halloween, we do not have everybody up and down the street helping the city go forward.
I think that improves a little bit every time we do it.
When you take a look at.
You're right on, Steve, you're absolutely right on.
Yeah, it's hard to engage people, but I think they need to see a demonstration of success before they jump in.
We've been here 100 years, other people haven't been around that long, and the whole town gets, for some reason, we have built a wall about helping each other. Like the moose and the elks don't come in together and help us down here. Because I've gone to them and asked them about, oh, we just work within our own self, we don't go out. Those are two major organizations whose policy is not to be part of the community. It does things for the community, but it doesn't do it with the community.
Well, the elks has been part of our, what we're doing.
The elks comes down here, the pawns went down here, the lions were down.
But not, not as a group together, they're individual groups coming down to help, yes.
People are doing their, doing their mission. I mean, I know that you've seen in the paper, we're 70% commuter town. People work in Portland, they don't have precious few minutes left over. And ask anybody what happened to the powwow, ask anybody what happened to the sour crop fest, not enough people to do those.
So what I'm, what I'm going to say, because we're coming up on our five minutes, what I'm going to say, Steve, is you're right, and it's something that definitely we as council are trying to do, we are putting forth an effort, and that hopefully more people get involved.
Jenny, one of the comments I'm making about that is I've come from a different part of the country, or actually a number of parts where they do get here, and people do commute, but they still get together. What you say here is the excuse they use, and it's true. They don't, they get home and they don't put an extra hour in the community. And that's the thing we got to break down. Yes, you got to put in an extra effort, and the vacuum community makes it a little more difficult, yes, but do it. And that's we don't get, and that's the one thing we have to work on.
And wish more people felt like you, Steve, thank you.
Now, some people question that.
Sometimes we agree, Steve.
How are we all doing? Good, good. So I fit into the category, so my wife and I just bought a home in Warren.
What's your name, your name?
Hi, I'm Jason.
Jason.
Last name is Resch, R-E-S-C-H.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, yeah, we bought a home in Warren three weeks ago, and we work in Portland, so we're in that 7%. I'm not sure how you all look at me for that, but.
Glad you're living here, welcome.
Thank you. I, we love the area, we've lived here in Portland since 99, and we do a lot of traveling out this way, and I really fell in love with some places with marks on the channel and other places, kind of starting here in town. We've been looking at this area for years and finally made the move, so. I guess my question to all of you is, is this the meeting I go to? Am I part of Scappus, are we part of St. Helens? I really don't know.
You are Columbia County.
Okay.
Yes, you would be a Wednesday, Wednesday morning over there at courthouse or at 10 o'clock, and then 1 o'clock, I do believe, as well. Is that correct? I think they have two different sessions too as well.
Yeah, the public meeting is where everybody shows up at 10 o'clock.
Sure.
And then there, and then they have a work session later.
Yeah, I think we might even go work into the work session if it was something that you really wanted to call the courthouse and say, so either or, I would, you know, you got your.
Depends on the way you want.
Yeah, let me, I can open the door for you a bit and say that you can serve on one of our committees, our Parks Commission, our Library Commission, our Planning Commission. You can, you.
Bicycle and pedestrian commission.
Everything you're saying is great, some educators as well.
Nice, that's true.
Yeah, that's always, I've always governed, because I worked in Portland for 15 years, is where my kids went to school, that's where my heart was.
Yeah.
And you're more than welcome to serve or volunteer in any, do whatever in whatever capacity you'd like. You know, we're not going to judge people by their address, certainly.
Are you in the St. Helens School District, district?
St. Helens School District, yeah.
Perfect. We're going to get to school board, and they're heading in a different direction, and it's encouraging.
Well, good.
Yes.
Happy to hear that. I do think that, you know, life is busy, and having two kids at home, it's a lot of I want to kind of meet the neighbors, and it is a commitment for sure, but I think that's what this is all about.
Absolutely.
Both of my kids volunteer at different city events. So I was like, how am I going to be able to do this? And another lady on the committee, she goes, take your kids with them. They learn from the time they're little, and then it won't be something straight until they get to big.
Just so I'm clear, I could get involved in committees, but if I want to get more involved in my city, it would be Columbia County.
Yeah, because you're Warren Zepco.
You're unincorporated.
I sent you a factory.
Yeah.
But you're welcome to join us.
Thank you.
Yes, always welcome to come down here and speak your mind.
I should point out, there's a little bit of Warren Zepco within our urban block down there.
There is.
It's a little bit, not much, but there is a little bit, yeah.
Achilles Road, is that part of ours, or it's right there, I know it's cussed.
So we're off the Crown Point in Blahy, I feel like we're.
Oh, yeah, you're a little ways out.
You probably will be in one year.
Is that urban block down there though?
One or the other.
I think he's out, out of urban block down there too, yeah.
Well, I so prefer St. Helens.
Hey, yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Feel free to stop by anytime. We love having people here. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Deliberation Street Vacations, portion of North 10th Street adjacent to 1020 Columbia Boulevard.
I have a question for Jacob, this is why I asked who's going to be here.
Okay.
Jenny referenced the skinny street standard. I'd like to hear for my memory and for the record, what the street standards are for width, like when it's 40, when it's 50, when it's 70, that kind of thing, just because we have opposition to the skinny street, I want to hear just kind of the quick.
Yeah, I actually went up to Jacob and asked really quick for my own sake, what it was included in the skinny street. So it's five-foot sidewalks, two-foot buffer, and then 26-foot travel, so 13 each direction. So.
So no on-street parking?
I have a good question. What it says, there's no on-street parking if the street's only 20 feet wide. It may have parking on one side for the 26.
I bring it up because of the pushback we got on the development off of Vernonia Road, about the narrow streets in there, and I just recently, can't remember where I was, had to turn my van around in Scappus there on, I call it the crap property, whatever that is there where the Seinfeld Development, where all the streets have pickle names. The streets are so narrow and people, you have two people that's got an SUV and a truck, and then they have a boat, and their garage is full, and literally, there's no room and no vision. And then even over on Matson Street, which is the full width street, they've got four wheel drive parked down the street, and you go back out of the driveway, you can't see who's coming. So I just want to make sure that we exercise that this is the best, that 40-foot is a good answer.
I don't know, the case, the two streets, Vernonia and Matson that you mentioned, they might be wider right of way than it developed. So you might be referring to the wide, right of way width is different than the developed street width. So if that was fully developed at that width, it might have been a different experience for you.
I think part of the issue there was access because there's a whole subdivision there.
Right, but there's streets within the subdivision that are narrow that we're complaining about, that subdivision that's not built yet, it's not Vernonia Street, it's the streets within.
Because there was parking on one side.
Right.
So they're worried about that, and I just don't know, because we don't know, I mean, I guess that affects the development, because if you have the applicant put a fourplex in on one side, and then the other people that are not so interested in getting a vacation on the other side, the probability that there could be a fourplex on both sides of the street.
Sure.
How many cars are that? And is there going to be enough parking for all of that? Because usually in aplex, people get two spots, and then how do people come visit? And how do they have their car that broke down?
Well, there's ingress and egress also, of emergency vehicles and a fire engines as well.
Right, I just want to make sure we've thought that about with the 40-foot, or if it really should be 40, if we want to.
It's actually, what's left is 65 feet, or even with the 25 feet, that's proposed.
Yeah. Yeah, so the 65-foot that he referenced is, I was using the minimum, so in case the other property did want to vacate, what was the remainder of the right of way outside of the.
It still would meet all those requirements.
Right.
Yes.
It would still meet our skinny street requirement.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's a reason why we're limiting it at 200 average daily trips, which is 10, I'm sorry, 20, single-family dwelling units, which have about 10 each. So even if they're, in your case, you were mentioning a fourplex and another fourplex, that would still meet our standards.
By quite a ways too, right?
Yep, by a lot.
Yeah.
Thanks for asking that.
Yeah.
I just, I, it's kind of because I have two kids, and because my kids walked to that school for a lot of years, and every single, I mean, Chief Mott is not here, but the cops pull over dozens of people for their crazy turns into that school, and people don't stop people when crossing guards are in the street. They knew and ran kids down.
Yeah.
It's awful there. So I just want to make sure that we're being extra, and I guess this is the street vacation one conversation.
Yeah.
And then it's development two conversation.
Yeah, and I would say Steve, that stopping at crosswalks is a completely other conversation.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to kind of weigh in on that person who spoke against the proposal, and that was Mr. Topaz, and he started the conversation with 100 years from now. And even though I appreciate the, the idea of looking ahead, 100 years sometimes is somewhat indifferent to speculate on what the issue is, but what the concerns and what the city's going to look like and how, and would, you know, how, how this decision tonight will affect that. But this is a big decision because we vacate the property and the citizens are not getting it back. And that's a, that's, that's a tough one. That's, that's tough to be a person in this seat, represent the people and the citizens of this community and say, yeah, this is a good thing to give up this property for possibly four families or three or four families who might want to live there if you're going to develop that area, or if that area's going to be developed. At this point, I, I have to agree that, that nothing is going to be developed back behind that area, and so I'm very much in favor of it at this point. I don't see a lot of negative concerns, and so I support it.
I think that we do need to think long-term, and often in street vacations, that's what we're looking at, whether they lead to another developable area, and in this case, they don't. They lead to a canyon that probably is not going to be able to be developed. Also, that's a section of town that we want to see develop more. It's like this vacant area between one part of town and another part of town, so it sounds like a positive thing to me.
Good point.
So I would support it.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Councilor Lot?
I agree all around.
He's all around. And then I'm just going to say, I would have to agree with that. It's something the city has currently been having to pay to maintain, that has never been utilized since I've lived here. I think the guys were just over there, we'd eaten at about a month ago, and it seemed like they were down there quite a while too. Seems like it took them more than a day to get all that, because it's 90 feet wide. And with the cliff on the opposite side, the cliff that, the road that's never going to go through, still leaves 65 feet for the other, they're not trying to utilize the whole street, which they could have, you could have actually asked to buy that vacation from the other people, and I like that it's going on the tax roll. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm going to be honest with you. Yeah, and it's smart of you to try to get it, but I see it going on the tax roll, and I think that's a good thing. And we get 25 feet we don't have to maintain, and hopefully, maybe we'll do a little extra, keep it looking nice. You'll have new places.
That's what he did was after I had already done a bunch. Might also get us.
Don't forget Jenny.
She commented right off the get-go.
Four more places that are affordable.
She didn't, she.
I'm going to actually ask for a vote. Do you want, do you have any more comments?
I had, I had already knew that it was coming, and I just wanted to hear more explanation of the issue with it.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a vote on vacating the portion of North 10th, all in favor?
You need a motion?
Oh, yes, I do. Does somebody want to make a motion? Anybody? Apparently you're not getting it, you got to come back.
I'm picking up the wording.
I move that we vacate a street portion of North 10th, street adjacent to 1020 Columbia Boulevard.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to.
Yeah, we need that provision here.
Oh, right.
To have.
Accepted, how about if we accept the staff recommendation?
That, that'll work for either one.
Okay.
Amended.
Amended, yeah. Okay, the motion's being amended.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to vacate the north portion of North 10th adjacent to 1020 with provisions for sewer.
As recommended by staff.
As recommended by staff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, unanimously. Okay, ordinance, final reading, ordinance number 3220, ordinance to amend the city of St. Helens comprehensive plan map for certain property from the light industrial designation to the general residential designation, and the zoning district map from the light industrial zone to apartment residential.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 3220 as read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3220, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Resolution number 1800, a resolution adopting the St. Helens branding and wayfinding master plan.
Move we adopt resolution number 1800.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 1800, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Resolution number 1801, a resolution assessing cost and abatement as a lean against 215 North 5th Street, St. Helens, Oregon.
Move we adopt resolution number 1801.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 1801. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Resolution number 1802, a resolution assessing cost and abatement as leans against 375 South 13th Street, St. Helens, Oregon.
Move we adopt resolution number 1802.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 1802, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Resolution 1803, a resolution assessing cost and abatement as a lean against 920 Plymouth Street, St. Helens, Oregon.
Move we adopt resolution number 1803.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1803, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Resolution 1804, a resolution adopting the universal fee schedule and superseding resolution 1789.
Move we adopt resolution number 1804.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 1804, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, A, Parks Commission meetings dated August 14, 2017, B, Planning Commission minutes dated September 12, 2017.
Move we approve consent agenda for acceptance, A and B as read. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A and B, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Consent agenda for approval, A, declare surplus properties electronic equipment, B, declare surplus property policeman, C, street closure request, D, OLCC license, E, accounts payable bill list. That's it, yeah, that's it for that consent.
Move we approve consent agenda nine, eight through E.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I, you know, we talked a little bit on the work session earlier and about the white paper site. It would really be nice to, um, to get that going, and I don't, I know we talked about it, but I think if there was something we could do to maybe give staff the okay to, um, go ahead and do the survey and get the wetlands identified there. It's moving in the right direction and also be able to talk to a couple rock outfits and just show them the property. I think now is the time with everything slowing down. Because when they're crazy busy, you're not going to get them to over there and look at it. I mean, maybe, maybe it's worth a lot of money, maybe it's not, we don't know. And, uh, you know, it doesn't hurt to entertain the idea. So I wanted to, um, get ahold of, or a couple of us get ahold of John Jersey and Scott Parker and Knife River and, and be able to show them that contractor parking lot that needs to be leveled down for destruction. I think it's, I think it's time. I think we need to move in that direction. It's not gonna, if it's there, the value's there, it's not costing the city anything. Anything at all.
I want to see us move forward on that project, too. I want to see the industrial park become a reality. And this all falls under research, and I think that's something we can.
Put that on the agenda for a future meeting to deliberate on and discuss and move forward.
So this is where I guess I would have to disagree, Doug. That's why I'm bringing this up again, is we've talked about this and Sue brought that we needed to identify the wetlands and survey it months ago. And we're gonna continue to push this out. I don't think the, we have to survey it for our tenants in order for them to build. We need a surveyor there no matter what.
Well, that's what I'm agreeing with. That's what I'm saying. It's just a matter of process of, okay, let's all talk about it and vote on it. And do you want to do that right now?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly, I don't think it's really even something that we've discussed a lot of already. We've all talked about it, we've all known about it for quite some time. I think now's the time to start putting it into play. We have that power as council to be able to just go ahead and say, yes, we want staff to do these things for us.
We need to, in my, and, and it's just, it's just our two different styles. And my style is to get everything out in the open and get it on, in black and white, on paper, on the agenda so people can see, our citizens can see what we're voting on and what we're doing. And that way, they can come to the table and make public comment and influence us. And so that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
So also, and what I'm saying is they already know that we have a marijuana grow down there going in. That's already been passed. We have to survey that for them. Why do we already have a surveyor down there that has to be a legal surveyor for the state? Why not get a few other pieces done? And we have to identify wetlands because we need to know the do's and don'ts of where we can go and where we can't. So, and I'm just going on what staff recommended, and it's not like we haven't been talking about this for quite some time. Publics have plenty of opportunity to come down and say, uh, this is what I think you should do. You guys have owned this property since I, before I've been mayor.
But the public hasn't had the opportunity to see the agenda, that people actually read these things, and they're going, I'm gonna show up to a council meeting and talk about this and weigh in on it. I think that they need that. I think that we've talked about it, but we want to hear from our public as well. That's all, that's the only difference.
John, where do you feel we are in this process?
I mean, so I just want to say one more thing before I let John speak. When I first came here, I went to Chuck Dottry. He told me, he was a community county, Columbia County Economic Team. And who really is, and the whole other crews there, too, I'm trying to think what they are, there are three counties. But when they tell me that you guys should get that property prepped and cleaned and have it ready in January, and here we are in October, and I'm not asking to spend any mu- much monies. Actually, maybe none, maybe we benefit from it for site prep. And we want to push it towards another month, I think that's ridiculous, or a couple of weeks out. It's not nothing that we haven't been discussing, and that's just where I stand. And I'm hoping the council will back a decision for once. That's a good idea. I don't think it's a bad idea in any way, shape, or form that will help stimulate our, and, and and I respect you, what your, your process, Doug. But I don't think, uh, we're asking for a lot of, we're not bringing in another company. We're just doing site prep, we're doing surveying, we're doing wetland identification.
Can, I think Keith has comments.
Just fun to, I mean, uh, I've kind of been working down there a little bit this last year or so. All these things are in the works, and we've talked a lot about it, you're right. But we, we have not talked about, there's an order to do things and how to do them, whatnot. And, and you're right, we need to get them going, but we can wait and talk through it at the next session about how, how to go about doing it and.
All we do is talk. That's all we do. I'm, what, what, what in, what, that I'm proposing to do? What is, what would be?
So they're all on board. Obviously, everybody isn't on board.
I mean, so now, now maybe it's time for discussion. I don't mind taking my time and talking about it.
There's way too much to discuss.
I brought it up earlier.
Understand that.
And you guys, now that I'm saying I want to implement this, you guys are all of a sudden changing your mind. We talked about this.
Everybody wants to implement it, I think. It's just.
I guess, um, I, you know, John, I thought we were moving in that direction. I thought some of those things were already out there.
They are in some respect, yes, well, yeah, I'd like to talk about it.
The city purchased an industrial site with a single user on it. We've been going through its economic development effort to transition that industrial site into an industrial park, which we conceivably have defined roads and public utilities and easements and, you know, access slots and just the whole things that go along with the master, anything you do at a master plan level. This picture subdivision and all the work that goes into that for residential. We've done some of that conceptually. We're, and I don't think it's, there's a balance here because we don't know what's going to come. The, the idea is that this conceptual work is to attract a middle-sized building in the ten to thirty thousand square foot market, which is really what we've been hearing is, is a popular size. And what the omic buildings and those subcontractors, that would probably be about the right manufacturing type, types of sizes. There's some environmental work to do for sure for the whole site. We need to understand what the, uh, the wetlands are, what the ground conditions are. I think we have a okay, at least a pretty good first look at the environmental issues with our, our acquisition. We understand, we have a bit of indemnity, and we have know what's, what, where to some extent. Lease obligation, we do have some obligation to do surveying to create this lease option, but there's a really good reason to be cautious about doing that too early because we don't have all those roads defined quite yet and those spaces in which we can't create an island of a lot because it has to access on a public way. We could do, you know, a platter of those. We can start plating flats or subdividing subdivisions. There's ways we could get there to, if we had that immediate obligation, we could go in and do that nine-half acre survey to find the public access because it's required to have a way out of there. We could do that. But then if the, if the lease doesn't go through, if they don't, if their business doesn't materialize, then what do we have? We have this kind of awkward piece of property there. So I, I think that we could move forward on portions of it. The environmental review in particular, which would include soils and contaminants and the wetland piece of it.
So Rick, I'm ready to make a motion once I understand everything because this, this is new information for me. Part of this was new information. Once I get all that information, and hopefully that's why I ask for, you know, in our next meeting to give everyone an opportunity to kind of like weigh in on what some problems are and what they aren't, rather than saying, okay, go ahead, Sue and Neil, when you get back and get that surveyed. And, and so that's all. I mean, it just being a little more cautionary kind of thing and then going through the process of making certain it is black and white and our public knows. And that's the most, to me, that's the most important.
So I can assure you, I did go to Sue Nelson again and reiterate because I utilize the professionals like Jacob, Jen, Sue, Neil. And I don't have all the answers. And my biggest thing would be to also, and just get into the talks of bringing those, those three businesses out, I don't think would hurt. I think it would be rather than sooner than later, if somebody decided they wanted to, um, this gets the ball rolling. Somebody decided they wanted a big site because that, that over there is uncontaminated because I grew up, that was never developed other than that parking lot and those ten buildings over there. It's fortunate that I rode motorcycles on all that property. And so I do know that that rock is uncontaminated with nothing in it. There are some wetlands near it that need to be identified on the backside going towards Hope Garden Road. A big, big water pond. It could be that we could be actually revenue positive on site preparation.
And John's been working on this for some time, so I am guessing that he's been following the plan as far as, as timing.
Sure. Just I, I happen to be, um, know both those guys personally. And, and Knife River, I actually ran into Jeremy, um, who manages the three sites here, Jeremy Russell. And he said he would give me a contact information for Knife River. So I figured, let's get three of them out there and see what.
Just throw this out, Rick, just because there's no reporters here and whatnot. I talked to you about this earlier, that I'm kind of, I took on this project to work in this because we don't have staff to do it. And I'm probably the shortest timer around here. And I've already got so many targets, I don't care how many more I get on it. But you need to keep out of those targets.
Yeah.
Because of your position and whatnot. So that's, that's one of the reasons, and we talked about this, that it's better off.
I don't see it as a target.
Try and stay out of that stuff.
But see, that's where I disagree. I don't see it as a target. I see it as me being a businessman who understands business, who understands that this city.
I understand, but that's exactly how I got the targets on my back, though.
Well, Keith, then put a big target on me because I ain't gonna stop because this is my personality. This is why I'm successful.
And I don't mind, you can help, yes, but you really need to keep out of, you know, a distance as much as you can. That's all I'm saying.
I probably won't. Probably, I, I, when it comes to connecting dots, I will definitely connect dots. I will connect people as much as possible as I can. If it's benefiting our community for better, I absolutely will. And just know this, I am not in any way, shape, or form affiliated with any of those agencies. Just so, I mean, if that's ever suspected, I have no problem looking somebody straight in the eyeball and telling them they're dead wrong. I sleep very, very, very well at night, Keith. Always have.
It's just all about perception.
Who I am.
I'm not, I don't have any connections out here. I don't live at, I have no relatives out here, nothing out here. I have no connections.
I know you've got a rap, but.
So, anyway.
So I understand, I appreciate the caution to the wind. But I will not, for any, anybody, if I feel that it's right and it's for the greater good of this community, will not, I will go toe-toe with anybody and debate them one hundred percent.
There's other, there's just other ways to do things, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, and this is my style.
The kind of work you're talking about is going to require technical expertise to do that. That's, uh, wetland consultants, the, uh, environmental work. We have a on-call services relationship with, with Mall Foster. They have those resources in-house if you want. Otherwise, we'd be looking at other contracts to be, even at that, we would bring back the scope of work and the contracts to take a look at to get the next, the funding piece of that figured out.
Well, these guys are like loggers, they can look in the shadow, and they can say, oh, there's somebody square foot in that board. That's all I'm saying right now, John.
Oh, yeah, they can do assessment work all day long.
Yes.
Mining permits and working with Tagami and all the things.
Not mining. It's not mining. It's site prep. And no matter how you look at it, that would be a site prep leveling that, but.
We're allowed to mine out there, by the way. I have spent several hours working on this, Rick. Whether you know it or not, I've spent with Jacob and John both, so, and, and.
I'm not looking to mine, I'm looking to level it.
I understand that. Our city code allows us to mine on industrial property.
So I guess that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know what, if they say you guys got, uh, if they say you got two million dollars worth of rock there wholesale, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars for us to come in and blast and chew it up to three-quarter minus, then you got the numbers.
Or quantity.
Yeah, or quantity, absolutely.
And all we're saying is it's a great idea. Let's wait until after our next meeting when we can all talk about it. That's all we're saying.
I think having people cruise the site is a really fine thing, too.
That, that's what, that's all I was asking for, is people to cruise the site. I'm not trying to do it behind your guys' back. I'm bringing it right here in front of you. I, we all can go down that property.
But there were, there were three parts to what you were suggesting, and that's only one of them.
Okay, and the other part was to survey the nine-point-five.
And do the environmental.
So they know their setbacks and, and all that. And then the environmental, which was brought up by Sue months ago.
Not saying that we don't need to do it. It's just a matter of timing, and something that we're already working on, I think.
Okay. I, I, we're talking to Sue, she doesn't know, she hasn't said yet, we're doing that in two months.
Well, if we're gonna be doing it with Mall Foster, then.
Need to get a scope of work.
Yeah.
A task, and the council approves it, and we move forward.
There we go.
But as far as cruising the site and having people come out and take a look, absolutely, there's no reason not to do that.
We take people on property all the time.
Okay, and then be prepared, I'll be bringing you something soon. With this type of attitude, this is who you get when I get passionate about something. That's how I get stuff done.
Well, and that's a good thing, too. Much like the property and Sykes Road, we look at it and have to come out and how much difference out there. We have our orister go out there and even goes like that.
And I'm not looking to mine it, Keith. I'm saying site preparation, it's industrial property.
More information is good.
You want to talk about, no wonder you get targets on your back. You use words like mining.
It's how like it is, that's all.
Okay, so that, that's my, uh, I, I had something else, but you know what? It's gone. It was right there. So we're gonna go on down to Councilor Lot.
I don't have any of that.
Councilor Carlson?
I sent the email to the council, but I wanted to say on the record to just appreciate, I think sometimes we think of parks as where kids swing. My daughter was at a cross-country meet when it was pouring down rain here, weekend before last. Went across the creek, there was a hundred and fifty participants that was at McCormick Park. And this is an annual thing that they do for the high school track. They've run this course for, I guess, ten, fifteen years, something like this. They've always run this course across the creek. They always have it late so that there's water in the creek, so it's more official. And I'm standing there with Les Al parents, so Wilson parents, and they're like, this is a gorgeous park. You guys are so lucky to have this here. And I said, you don't realize that parks aren't just about eighty-degree days and picnics. It's like, that was, I mean, a hundred and fifty students came to our community that day. And I thought that was pretty exciting. That was a proud day to hear people from really nice neighborhoods that have a lot more money for parks than we do. Be so impressed with us, and it was just a proud day to participate in that. Also wanted to thank all the nonprofit groups and all the kids that came out for Halloween Town and did their fundraising out here, just. Town and did their fundraising out here, just so cold that morning and so cold that night and they stayed there all day. Kids, little high school kids working twelve, thirteen-hour days here raising money. That was awesome. I know Keith talked about the youth council dance this Saturday. I hope people will send their kids and turn out it's a safe place for seventh grade to twelfth grade kids to come in costume and enjoy their Saturday evening. The other thing is Halloween, the police, I know that maybe someone talked about the police is doing a Halloween event for kids on the thirty-first and I hope to see lots of parents have that safe environment for their kids because I know door-to-door is a little scary nowadays, but the cops love to be around kids and kids love cops, so hope to see everybody enjoying that holiday. That's all I got.
Just jumping my memory out, my other thing was Halloween Town was highly successful. It was fun to see all the people in the community and and our first responders were very, very professional. Councillor Con.
Back on Halloween Town, it gets better every year and like I was telling Steve, I think we improve all of the time and I think more and more people do get involved from the community. So onward and upward.
Certainly on my on my report.
I was just going to say, I was going to announce you, Councillor President Morton. Trying to be more professional.
Got it.
We need to.
We need to slow it down, right? Not get anything done, right?
Let's go.
So so really positive comments on the shuttle, it was going back and forth and you know that opens the door to some insight of transportation throughout our throughout the Holton and the riverfront district or the historic district of how to really bridge that gap between what's going on in Holton and what's going on here. Does it offer some kind of transportation? Shuttle makes so much sense. A trolley shuttle would be wonderful for long term, you know, I mean it's that's not next year, it might be a few years down the line, but we'll look at it and I just think it's something that's that's that worked and worked very well. Very positive remarks about that. And then when councillor Carlson was not here today, when I reported on the slogan of of pride in our city, City Takes Pride, like I use the example of Portland, it works for you or something like that and the pride kind of thing is I suggested that the staff take a look and do a little brainstorm and see if they come up with something and then I thought, well, let's also involve the youth council because there's some bright minds there and when we get someone in his chair over there, over here, they can report on what they find and they can report to either the staff or the council on what they think might work. But I think it's I think it's worthy to go ahead and try to find a slogan for to keep our pride, our civic pride up and especially in our parks because what I reported when you weren't here was that Sand Island was as as clean as I've ever seen it and that was after massive yachts were using it through throughout the weekend. So that's that's my two bits that hopefully we get the youth council to to get going on something that might be pertinent and and could be could be their new T-shirt.
Island, you know, it could be a haunted island all of October.
Well, that's what the yacht club used to do.
Yeah, 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 St. Helens Yacht Club, yep. Little spooks they'd have.
They got the spook crews all the way from Portland.
Yep. Okay, so now we're doing the staff. You want to go this way or you want me to go that way, Joe? Yeah, threw you off last time.
There you go.
Margaret? Actually, let me let me see if Janet or Jacob want to offer something. It's good seeing you guys, I'm glad you wrote it out.
There's a couple of big projects, obviously, you know, the middle school project is moving. We've been having a lot of discussions. We'll probably see the building permit for the CCEC very soon, the middle school will be a little bit later because it's a larger project. So anyways, that's where we Violet's Villa, you probably know what's sold.
Yep.
And we did receive a zone change and subdivision application for that property. They're not complete yet, but anyways, there's actual movement on that, not just rumors, as has been the case for.
A lot of years.
Many, many years.
I was at zone right now.
It's zoned, well, so several years ago, the estate rezoned some of the perimeter R seven to highway commercial. So it's pretty much highway commercial. And there's been a lot of discussion over the years about the back two-thirds or so having multi-dwelling units and that doesn't work in highway commercial. So they're going to look at changing it to general commercial and that'll be something that you all see sometime in the future.
So it'll still be commercial along the highway and then residential and behind?
That is the discussion that's going on right now.
That's what they want?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's discussion, you know, application process, all that stuff is still forthcoming.
Right, we're still, we're already getting lots of questions about that.
So yeah, there's movement. A lot of projects that we've been talking about for many years and and other ones too that we've been talking about for years, so it's interesting to see.
Yes, it is.
The ups and downs.
I thought one thing, maybe in the next few months, you might have our first or well second urban renewal agency meeting to actually define bylaws and charter and actually just kind of keep that alive. Tax bills are coming out, so that assessment should be on this year or this upcoming next year's.
Good point, Jen, thank you. Margaret?
I reviewed a lot of things that are happening at the library, but I neglected to mention that Saturday, October twenty-eighth, is the Kewaunaw Children's Fair. It's a very large event and the library is always represented there. Our youth librarian will be there for the day with activities for children and also to make a lot of contact with parents to talk to them about our programming for children. And I wanted to welcome this gentleman in our audience to the community and let you know that we are in a kind of an unusual corner of the state where everybody does not have tax-supported library service, but we do offer non-resident cards and we think they're an excellent value. So if you and your young family would like to drop by the library sometime, we'll be glad to show you what we have to offer and we have a wonderful youth librarian that is very welcoming to children. That's all I have.
Thanks. And then when does the Universal Library, kind of Universal because so many people are tied in, when is that going to affect?
The new fees?
Yes, I know that we're.
We we set it as at January one.
Yes.
We have a lot of library structural changes to make in order to affect that. For instance, we have we, one of the things that we said was that we wanted to charge the list price for things.
Yes.
And we have about forty-eight thousand items in our collection.
Oh wow, yeah.
So we are developing a process for updating that information.
Major.
Some of these things are going to take a little time, but Gretchen and the team are working on a implementation strategy. They've already got it going.
Nice.
So January one is what we're looking for and they're also going to work with Crystal on a marketing campaign to roll out that new information.
We're not raising the fees.
No, so what it what it is is basically if you want to go to library in Hillsborough.
That's the Passport Program.
Passport, yes.
It's a statewide program where if you're if you become a Passport Library, then you can take your card to another Passport Library and get their card as well. So that's a really great thing for commuters so that if they are working in a different city, they can use that layup library or maybe if they have a vacation property, they can get a library card where they spend their summers or whatever.
And the library has really excellent programs for both children and adults.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Welcome to the city. I don't have a sales pitch though, so I'm sorry. One thing I forgot to hand out during our little quarterly financial report, Keith a while ago had asked for some information on the investments that we do outside of the pool account. If you remember, we have about three million dollars that we keep separate from the pool that we do, different type of investments, just to kind of broaden the market a little bit. The goal is to take a little bit of the pool money and hopefully beat the percentage of the pool, which is usually pretty low, so it's not hard to do. So this is just a quick review. Just so you know, we have three bonds right now, about like I said, three million dollars total. And if you turn, just to give you a rough idea, the first bond you see on the top is a Wells Fargo bond, second one is a Freddie Mac bond, and then the third one is a Federal Farm Credit Bond. But if you turn to the back page, that's probably going to be the most informational part to you because that tells you when we usually see money come in from each bond throughout the year. So from these three bonds, we usually see or are scheduled to see about forty-five or so thousand dollars in interest payments every year for the next two or three years when these bonds are are in place. So I just wanted to give the council a little bit of framework for what we're doing and how much money it brings in. And we'll have a future discussion when we talk about financial policies in December and January. Right now, this money is that interest revenue is just kind of sitting in the general fund. We don't do anything with it, it's not earmarked for anything. So I just, we'll have a discussion later about what the council has in mind for this money, if it's to sit there for just in case, if it's for a specific purpose, just a general discussion about in the future about a financial policy for that. But I just wanted to give you some basic information here to to digest if you like. I'm happy to send you the full report with all the details if you want. If you want some reading material for, you know, falling asleep or something, I'd be happy to do that, so just let me know.
How little the bonds actually, I mean, they they create a.
Correct.
Part of it, it's a little amount, really.
Yeah, it is very little and it's it's very limited in our financial policy on purpose so that we don't have a lot of risk.
Absolutely.
So we can beat, like I said, if we can beat the pool by a little bit, then we're kind of ahead of the game, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't I don't invest in the stock market or anything like that, so.
No, we don't want to gamble with.
Correct.
Our citizens much.
Heads up, I'm very cautious.
Thank you very much.
Right, I'd rather have forty-five thousand dollars every year than sixty-one year and zero the next, so. The only other thing I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention in my department report was after we had the public forum the other day where you received all those where I received those pack of survey results and information, in anticipation of coming back to the council and having a discussion, I anticipated the council wanting staff to go back, talk about it, come back with actual ideas of what kind of options are there. So we did have a staff meeting with myself, John, Jenny, Jacob and Sue to kind of talk about all those options, how we, you know, what ideas could we formulate and come back to you to kind of give you some of our ideas and then you can tell us which ones you like or don't like and move forward with. So I'll have that report ready in November and we'll discuss that, so just be prepared for that. In the November timeframe, we'll come back with some ideas to talk.
November first.
Yep.
Yes, two weeks away.
Yep, that's all I have.
Okay, Kathy.
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay.
I do do work around here, but.
Oh, you do?
Yes, you do. I just don't have the laundry list of things to do.
You're not long-winded like Matt.
She gets all her work done.
And his values.
Okay, John?
So yeah, I had just.
It's okay not to report.
Something to add from the workshop is that council reached a treaty agenda to talk about the community foundation, talk about the dissolution and their assets.
Oh, yeah.
I received a letter that they are on a path towards dissolution and we've funded them a lot of assets over the year and their intention is to direct them towards the city and talk about that. And lastly, the Sunday Oregonian has a very stoic picture of Mayor Shoal on the cover, made a big splash. See that there.
On the Wolfman costume?
There you are.
That's great.
Just need to search Oregonian St. Helens in the box right there or something.
So does it.
I heard it was a good article. I heard it was a good article.
Yeah, it's a good article. Yeah, it's a good article, very positive. That's all I had.
Okay, anybody got any last comments?
I had one comment that I I noticed that with the city posted weather warnings and maybe the last two years, we've called Halloween, curtailed Halloween events based on extreme weather. Do we know how that will happen or whether that will happen as or if that could happen?
I don't, yeah, I don't think it's going to be a it's going to be more of just a torrential rain, it's not. I don't think too much thunder, lightning, you know, that type of implement weather. It's supposed to be an atmospheric river, it's one system after another, right?
Do we, there is live music planned in the squad in Comeyview Park? Do we have a plan?
It's fairly waterproof and it's this.
Yeah, the stage itself is.
This week and it's been raining, we're still seeing a lot of people taking tractor rides in the rain all day long.
I've seen California planes all over downtown area.
They're happy to do it, big smiles on their faces.
Today.
Okay, just be assured that for anybody that was listening, watching or whatever, that Halloween events, the calendar is goes on as scheduled for the weekend.
Looking at the weather thing, this is one point four inches upside our head.
So much?
Waterproof costumes.
An inch and a half. Just under. Well, play by your, I guess, but.
Okay, well, thank you for sitting to the meeting and welcome to our area. I'm glad you made it down here, you know, yep, yep. All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you for coming, Jacob.